Week of the Young Child is an exciting national event that celebrates the work of early childhood professionals and honors the work of families and their young children. Each day during the celebration, there's a theme. For example, on Monday was Music Monday, so classrooms were planning activities for singing, dancing, and celebrating their learning. On Wednesday was Work Together Wednesday, so there were lots of opportunities for children to work together, build things together, and learn together. And on Thursday was Artie Thursday. We know that early childhood is important, and high-quality early childhood experiences are important because that's what helps children be better prepared for kindergarten.
Hey, Wayne C. Spider. When up the water spout, down came the rain and washed the spider out. Out came the sun and dried up all the rain.
If a parent walked into a preschool classroom, they should see children engaged in play. They should see high levels of engagement with adults. We have a little over 1,200 preschoolers in 63 classrooms and 29 of our elementary schools.
I think Barbara's gonna do us.
I called to order this meeting of the Lincoln Public Schools Board of Education for May 9th, 2017. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Byer.
Ms. Byer is excused.
Mr. Boswell.
Present.
Mrs. Danick.
Here.
Mrs. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew.
Present.
Ms. Mungard.
Here.
Mr. Schulte.
Present.
I'm gonna continue through the agenda, but also, I think we need the little presentation folder. We're not seeing it up here, if that's laying around somewhere. Okay. Next, I would note that the Open Meeting Act is posted at the back of the room, if anyone wants to take a look at that. And then next, we have a public hearing on Student Fees Policy I would note on this item that staff has recommended changes to the current policy, and I hereby open this public hearing before the Board of Education of Lincoln Public Schools. This hearing is being conducted under the provisions of the Nebraska State Statute 79-2,125, and 79-2,135, and other Nebraska laws. The purpose of this hearing is to receive input regarding proposed Policy 5520. The input received in this hearing will be taken into consideration by the Board when we take action on proposed Policy 5520. Would the first person wishing to speak, please come forward now. Seeing none, I hereby close this public hearing. This concludes this evening's public hearing on the Lincoln Public Schools Student Fees-
Mr. Mayhew, if I might interrupt, I think staff has a report in regard to the public hearing.
Yes, just as part of the statute, we need to report the total fee waiver amount for the 2015-16 school year was $221,144.02, and that served a total of 1,422 students.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you. Now, I will close this public hearing. This concludes this evening's public hearing on the Lincoln Public Schools Student Fees Policy 5520. Next, that brings us to the minutes. We have minutes for approval. Are there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, those will stand as approved. And then we have special reports, presentations, and celebrations of success. And were we able to locate our folder? All right. Okay, that will be forthcoming then. So, in the meantime, I would like to go ahead and recognize Kathy Danick.
You have a computer in your hand.
Yeah, but I have to read what's on it instead of reading it.
Would Kamala Kenny, please, come forward? Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so you can hear me from standing up here, right? Okay, perfect. Kamala Kenny is widely respected for her teaching abilities at North Star High School. Ms. Kenny is specifically known for teaching critical life skills through family and consumer science courses. For those of you who don't know what family and consumer science courses are, in our old days, we called them home economics. But home economics has gone a lot further than just learning how to detail what you do in your home. It's truly about making a world for yourself and your family. She instills in her students the importance of learning as well as having fun, and wants students to acquire skills that will not only assist them in the workforce, but help them in their skills at home. Kenny believes, and I quote, "Teaching the skills that are taught in family and consumer sciences is critical. Everyone eats, everyone pays bills, gets a job, has relationships, coworkers, spouses, and children." Family and Consumer Sciences teaches the students how to live life and be successful at it. Some students might carry these skills into a career field, but if not, they will use them in their lives. Kenny has earned the respect of her fellow coworkers, as well as the family and consumer science teachers from across Nebraska. And so, I will read the following, which is in the form of a resolution, which I make in the form of a motion. Whereas Kamala Kenny, Lincoln North Star High School family and consumer science teacher, has been recognized by the Nebraska Association of Family and Consumer Sciences as the Family and Consumer Science Teacher of the Year. Whereas Kamala Kenny is widely respected for her teaching abilities, and specifically known for teaching critical life skills through family and consumer science courses that will help students succeed. And whereas Kamala Kenny has earned the respect of her fellow coworkers, as well as family and consumer science teachers from across Nebraska. And whereas Kamala Kenny teaches students valuable life skills necessary for building successful careers and healthy family relationships. And whereas Kamala Kenny connects with students to show them that learning can also be fun. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lincoln Board of Education does hereby congratulate Kamala Kenny for being honored as the Family and Consumer Science Teacher of the Year by the Nebraska Association of Family and Consumer Science Teachers.
Thank you very much.
Sadly, I brought no one. It's not because my family does not love me, but it's because
my family loves baseball. And I have an 11-year-old child that is playing ball right now. And so, those were the choices, and I, of course, said, "Go play ball." And I guess they said I had a moment to say a few words, and I just want to thank you all for supporting family consumer science education. I belong on a Facebook page that has about 8,000 FCS teachers from across the nation, and not every teacher gets the kind of support that we do here in Lincoln Public Schools. And I am very, very grateful for that. And I think that our community is grateful for it, whether they know it or not, because we do teach those life skills of how to pay bills, and why you pay your bills, and why you pay them on time, and what happens if you don't pay them, and how to have good, meaningful relationships, and what to do when you're not having a good, meaningful relationship and that conflict resolution. So, again, thank you so much, and thank you for the support. And I'm super proud to be an FCS teacher at North Star High School. I do have to add, sorry, I have to add this, because, just to put a little pressure on you maybe, though, if you vote against this referendum, I'm blaming John Neal, because I actually worked with John in Council Bluffs and did my administrative practicum under John, and so, it's all his fault. So, thank you.
All right. When they get home from the ballgame, have your family pull up the webcast and watch that you were on TV getting a well-deserved award. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Lanny?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
It's a great idea.
Great idea. All right. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boswell.
Yes.
Mrs. Danick.
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan.
Yes.
Ms. Mungard.
Yes.
Mr. Schulte.
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew.
Yes. Next, that brings us to Item 7.2, the Backpack Extra Mile Recognition. Sherri Steiskel. And our friend Scott Young. Welcome.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to present their awards for the Backpack Extra Mile. As you can see, I have Scott Young, the Executive Director of the Food Bank of Lincoln, joining me tonight. This year is our 10th year, and it was on April 29th, the Walk Was. I feel very privileged to work with a great group of people, starting with the Food Bank of Lincoln and their staff, our core team, the Business Affairs Leadership Team, the Communications Team, and especially our champions, those team captains that are each of the schools and departments. This is a team effort across all schools and departments. They include staff, students, parents, board members, businesses, and community groups. Our theme this year is Serve, Care, and Share. We used the book Last Stop on Market Street this year, and it's about a grandmother who takes her grandson to help feed hungry people. And it's about who they meet along the way. So, it goes great for our theme. So far this year, and here's the numbers part, we have raised over $188,000. This is the highest year that we've seen ever. The last one was around $175,000. So, this is terrific news. Over the past 10 years, it's been $1.5 million. That's the equivalent, because you know I like numbers, of 752 backpacks for that $188,000. Over the course of all 10 years, 6,000 backpacks. We're able to raise this kind of money through the hard work and effort of our staff members in the schools and departments, who believe in this program and know it helps our young children. Scott also has some comments?
Yeah, of course I do. I get paid by the word at the Food Bank of Lincoln. We'd like to thank Dr. Sco and Moore and Gorley, and now Dr. Joel and Dr. Standish for the great support we've received. We talk with food banks all over the country about our child hunger programs, and they marvel at the cooperation we get from the Lincoln Public Schools. And the boards, past and present, have all had a hand in all of this success. Something new we did this year, Garner Challenge from Garner Industries. The Garner Challenge added $3,500 to the top school who had the greatest percentage of growth in donations. It was McPhee Elementary School, which was one of the second-year schools that we got in our backpack program. It's a Title I school in the shadow of the Capitol. We also got $2,500 to nine other schools: Northeast, Sco, Irving, Hartley, West Lincoln, Lefler, Lakeview, and Meadow Lane Elementary School. So, we appreciate Phil Mullen and Garner's support of the Extra Mile Walk. I would also be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Steiskel, who called me, and it was 10 years ago, and said, "How can we make sure that Clinton kids have enough to eat over the holidays?" And out of that conversation, that was actually 12 years ago, out of that conversation came the Extra Mile Walk. And what started with 50 kids is now a food bank and the Lincoln Public Schools, serving between 4,000 and 4,500 kids and families each month during the school year through our various programs. And Sherri Steiskel created the foundation of that work by helping launch the Extra Mile Walk. And we cannot thank the boards, or the superintendent, or Sherri Steiskel enough. We've provided over a million meals to kids just through the Extra Mile Walk alone. So, Sherri, thank you.
Thank you. We'd now like to present the awards. The first one we have is Maxi Elementary, who took the top elementary school honors, and also the highest, of course, over all schools. Suzanne Reimers is the principal. She's not here tonight, but we have Sherri Kristen, who is that team captain. She also helps us in many other ways with selecting books and things that the teachers can use. Maxi raised over $17,700. Great job. Thank you to all of you for your support. Thank you to Sherri and Scott, and everybody at the Food Bank that we've worked with. That's been great.
Thanks, Sherri.
Thank you. The next one is to Lux Middle School, who took the middle school honors. I believe tonight, we have Brianna Stewart and Cory LaBash, who are sixth-grade teachers. Dwayne Doman couldn't be here tonight, but Lux raised over $8,000.
That's fantastic.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your support. We appreciate it. The generosity of Lux Community is who the greatest honor goes to. And Scott coming to talk to our social studies classes and our kids there, making them aware of the program as well.
Thank you. And I've got a grandson that goes to Lux, so I'm very excited about this. Thank you, guys.
Our next school is East High School, who took the high school honors. Sue Casades also had a concert tonight, but JJ Dougdale is here tonight. And East High raised over $9,000. JJ is another one of those people, Jennifer, that does add to the. Yes, thank you. Echo everybody's thanks for your support, and we love to be a part of this remarkable program and hope to continue to do so.
Thanks, Sherri. Thank you very much. Anything else, Ms. Steiskel? And Dr. Standish has a plaque that she'd like to present to, what I'm gonna call Dr. Sherri here.
Dr. Sherri informed us that this was gonna be her last year of the Backpack Walk. So, we want to recognize that. We're recognizing Sherri Steiskel for her service to Lincoln families coordinating the Backpack Extra Mile Walk for 10 years, raising over $1.5 million to feed hungry children. So, thank you. Anyone who knows Sherri, I said this also at the Walk. Sherri is the hardest worker I know. She just works so hard. And so, we do have new co-leaders, because it takes two. Jess Jefferson and Kim Schmidt have stepped up so we can continue this wonderful walk in the future with the Support of Business Affairs, the entire LPS community, and continue to work with the Food Bank. So, we're excited for the future. We know it's a big transition, but this is a huge recognition for you, and thank you for all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott and Sherri. Comments from the board? Annie?
Well, I think it shows the power of one person's idea, and it's pretty amazing. One person has a good idea, and with a few good friends can make a lot of good things happen. So, it's a good message to go out to the world, and thank you for doing that.
Other comments? Kathy?
Well, since I've known this lady since she was a little girl, people who lead with their heart leave the biggest impression on the world. Leadership isn't about what you do when people are looking. It's about what you do when nobody's looking. Sherri, thank you for how you did when nobody was looking.
The thing that touches my heart about this is that, you know, there's so much need in the community, and then trying to address that need, and trying to, you know, all the time, all the work, the rallying of so many people coming together to feed children. And it's so heartwarming. It's also sobering, though, the other side of that, the kids who still do not get backpacks, and I know that that's what keeps us going, is that attempt to make sure that no child goes home without a backpack. No child goes hungry on our watch. Sherri and Scott, thank you so much for your work on behalf of our community's children. Year after year, your places in heaven are assured. Thank you.
All right, next that brings us to Item 7.3, the Place Matters Community Mapping Project. And I know that several of us are excited to see this, maybe none more than Annie, who had asked that this information be presented to us. And Annie, would you care to introduce this?
I would love to. I'd like to introduce Lori Seibel, who is President and CEO of Community Health Endowment. I first saw these maps right after I got elected in 2015. And the way I know that is because I came to see the presentation, and you asked for elected officials to stand up, and my friend had to elbow me in the ribs, because I'm sitting around looking for who was going to stand up. But since then, and being part of the process for the strategic plan, I was like, "We really, as a board, need to see what these maps have to tell us about our community." And I'm excited that we can use them and see them as a tool, as we look forward envisioning how to do the best for our community. So, welcome. I'm really glad you're here, and I look forward to what you have to say.
Great. Well, thanks. You make me follow Scott Young and the Backpack Rugged Program, so I'll try to do that. I also want to take a moment, it's a personal privilege. I don't get to stand before the Board of Education very often, and thank you for the education of my children. I have a graduate and a ninth grader, both at the Zoo School, so thank you especially for that, and also for the work you do. I'm the daughter of, my mom served 38 years on the Board of Education, so I know that it's not an easy job. But to the work at hand, I want to talk a little bit about the Place Matters program. It's something that we really began thinking about when we saw a couple of documents. One was the Robert Wood Johnson Time to Act document, and it's one that's downloadable, and I would encourage you to download it as something that you might want to refer to, because it really talks about how to create healthier communities in a very strategic and ambitious way. But the other one, of course, is the Vital Science Project. We began to bring people around issues in our community. And as we did that, I really became intrigued with the idea of mapping our community. I'm an epidemiologist by trade. I'm someone who likes data. I like, but more than just looking at charts and graphs, I like to really see the stories that they tell. So, we just began making maps. We took data. We tried to make it visual. We tried to answer questions, if we could. And we really tried to figure out if place matters. In other words, if where you live in Lincoln, your very street address, impacts your health and well-being in the community. So, we began this process of making maps. We made more maps. Every map raised another question. We brought in people to look at the maps, and we used a very scientific process, where we gave everyone a sticky notepad, and we asked them to look at the maps, and based on their perspectives, to tell us what they were saying to them. And so, what you'll see in some of these maps are stories. What you'll see is data, but I think linked together, they'll begin to tell you things about the community that perhaps you haven't thought of before. The first map that I'd like to talk about is life expectancy. And life expectancy is a really interesting piece of data, because what it tells you is how long you can be expected to live, if you are born into a neighborhood and you live there your entire life. Now, not every person, most people do not live in the same census tract where they were born, but what it tells you is the impact that a neighborhood has on a person, especially if you live in a neighborhood at a very young age. What kinds of factors are at work there that can really change your long-term outcomes as an adult? So, if we look at Northwest Lincoln, we see it's 77 years. That's a little below the average for the city, which is 80 years, 80.1 years. But it's right about what people live on average in the United States, about 78 years. So, it's not an alarming figure, but it's certainly lower than what we would like to expect in our community. If we look to West Lincoln, we'll see it's 69 years. And so, there is a drop there of eight years. And then we begin the process of thinking, "Why is it? What's happening in that neighborhood that's causing the risk factors that would cause people to be expected to live a shorter life?" If we look up in the Northeast, we'll see it's 76 years. So, again, lower than average. And you begin to see a pattern. If it's lower in these areas, what do you know about the rest of the community already? That it's going to be higher. So, we begin to see patterns already with this information. If we go all the way down O Street, the other direction, to the east, you'll see it's 85 years. So, about 17 years of life expectancy different as you drive down O Street. And when I talk to groups, and especially to you young people, I say to them, "Imagine getting in your car on West O and driving all the way down O Street. Think about the things that are different in those neighborhoods. Think about the things that you see visually that you might not have noticed otherwise, but that you can see maybe having an impact on families and people who live there. The kind of stores that you see, the kind of access to healthy food you see, the kind of housing that you see. What is it that changes as you drive down O Street that you can begin to say, 'I understand a little bit about what's happening here.'" If you look to Southwest Lincoln, 80.3 years, right on target for what our average would be in the community. And if you look to the Southeast, it's 91 years. Again, these are driven by the factors of what is happening, the risk factors that are happening in that neighborhood that are causing people to be ill or to die. Now, of course, if we look right in the middle of our community, we see it's 63 years. So, there's that nearly 30-years difference just as you go from the heart of our community down to south- down to Southeast Lincoln. And people would say to me, that is not possible in Lincoln. That cannot be. And I think I probably was in that camp. I looked at this data over and over again, and I began thinking, really, in Lincoln, that can be, that can happen? But when you look at these next maps, you'll begin to see why that's absolutely possible, and how we can maybe do some things to change that. I think that if we're really going to change this big gap in life expectancy, it's going to take some really big things, really systemic things, in order to change in our community. It's not going to take little tweaks. That's not going to do it. It's going to have to be bigger. And I'm going to talk really quickly about three of those. Well, I stuck this in just today, and I handed out the article, maybe some of you heard on NPR, "Life Expectancy Can Vary By 20 Years Depending on Where You Live." So, this is beginning to take national attention, and I left the article there for you to read as well. So let's look at poverty. I think poverty is one of those big swings. Poverty impacts people in ways that we will never fully understand, and some people call it the cause of causes. It's really at the root of so many things that happen. So this is poverty in Lincoln in 1980, and I'm going to start to animate this, and you'll see it change over the course of time until we get till 2013. And of course, what you'll see is that poverty is suburbanizing, it's growing in every direction from the core. And what we see from that is that poverty is no longer limited to the core of Lincoln. Some people would say, oh, that's in the core. But it is moving out, and it changes the way we think about our neighborhoods, about our schools. There's a lot more hidden poverty. These are not the neighborhoods where programs are rooted, programs to alleviate poverty. People are having to rethink, how do we address poverty outside of the core? Because it's not just happening in this defined space, like perhaps some people would think. So poverty is the driving force for so many things, and underlying that is the fact that poverty makes people sick. That's just a fact. Not only does it make people sick because they have less access to healthcare, perhaps less access to healthy foods, those kinds of things, but simply the stress of being poor causes your immune system to react poorly. Poor people are more likely to get sick. And so that is, in fact, a relationship between life expectancy and poverty that cannot be ignored. So poverty is one big issue, and I know you're all aware of that. I also would, one thing that maps do is particularly terrific, is you begin to see the areas of our community that are starting to emerge as perhaps areas that we need to start paying attention to. And I think maps do that. If you look at the area, I don't know if I can show it on here, do I? Over here, in this area, which is around Union College, if you look down here, south of Highway 2, between 27th Street and 56th Street, keep your eye on those areas, and you'll begin to see things happening there perhaps more quickly than they're happening elsewhere in the community. And that's a sign to us, that we need to do something perhaps more quickly. So let's look at life expectancy and those people living in poverty. And as an epidemiologist, you know, I'm like, okay, I think there's a relationship. It's one of those things that you couldn't have made a stronger case for. Poverty and life expectancy are absolutely related. Another thing that I know you all care deeply about, but that we have to pay attention to, is childhood obesity. People who are, children who are obese are more likely to be obese as adults. That's just a proven fact. And if you're obese as an adult, you are more likely to live about eight years less than if you're not. That's eight years. That's a big swing. That's not a little thing. That is a huge thing. And so, I know you all know that a few years ago, we set a goal that no more than 15% of children in our community would be considered obese. We set that goal in 2010, and a lot of people went to work and did some amazing things to address that issue. And we achieved it. And we achieved it six years ahead of schedule. And we were excited about that, we were thrilled about that, and we should be. But if you look at this map, this is what this tells you, that we achieved the goal in part of the community. Because the reds and the oranges and the yellows signify where that goal was not met, and where there is work to do. So when you're looking at targeting resources, when you're looking at targeting programs, maps can be an incredibly powerful tool to use, because you can see exactly where you need to go, where the problem is the greatest. Maps are also great, because you can use them in combination with each other. If I look at this map, childhood obesity, where it's greater than 15%, and I lay it over with poverty, obviously, we're going to see a correlation. And you'll see those two spots that I mentioned, you'll see them begin to highlight in this. Then, if I look at where both those things are occurring together, that's what's in the red. That's where the work, the big work, needs to happen, when it comes to addressing not only poverty, but certainly obesity. And so if you want to look at places to go to work, to really invest people, resources, and finances to address obesity, those are the places that I would encourage you to look. The third thing that I think is critical, and again, I know you all recognize, is mental health. And I could stand and talk to you all day about mental health, especially in the adult population. But what I really want to address, and this map tells you where Lincoln Police Department made calls that are addressing a mental health crisis. So, that is an important statistic, and we fund many, many programs addressing adult mental health, people with mental health issues. But what I would ask you to consider in this map is, where did this come from? Where did this prevalence of mental health crisis come from? And I would make the case that it's rooted in childhood. You all have heard of the adverse childhood experiences, where the relationship of health risk behavior and disease in adulthood is related to the exposures to abuse and household dysfunction in children. That's where it starts, zero to five. And so if we look at the ACE study findings, the tipping point is four. If you ask a child 10 issues that were negatively impacting them, there's 10 items, and if they can answer four, that's when things start to go bad for kids, just four. And in fact, if you look at this study, it revealed that out of 100 people, people with no ACEs, none, they answered, they answered, these are kinds of questions like, did you have enough to eat when you were a kid? Did anyone in the household punch, slap, or kick you? Were you touched inappropriately? Did anyone in your home, were they incarcerated? Those kinds of questions. If a person had none of those, you can see on the left-hand side the kind of health issues they faced and behaviors they had as adults. One in 16 smoked, one in 480 used IV drugs, one in 96 attempted suicide. If you look in the far-right column, where people had seven or more of those ACEs, one in six smoked, one in 30 uses IV drugs, one in five attempts suicide. So the issue of how to address mental illness in adults, a good portion of it lies in how we treat and how we provide services for our very youngest children. Zero to five, that's where we need to really invest, and I would encourage you to think about doing that. So I want to provide you a few more slides, and then I know my time is up, but one of them is access to healthcare. We are in the midst, and your little card there tells you that we are having the reveal of our new maps on May 31st. I hope you can all be there. We are going to have many more maps, and these are going to be updated. But one of the things that we'll talk about is, this map shows that, yes, it's driven by market forces. Healthcare, you'll find healthcare totally driven by the market. And I am in no way suggesting that these primary medical resources should not be here. My question is, how do we plant those services where they're not? How do we say to a neighborhood that doesn't see health, think about where you live? Where I live, I drive by hospitals, I drive by health clubs, I drive by doctors' offices, I drive by dental offices. And what does every one of those buildings say to me as I'm driving along? It's saying, we want you to be healthy. Your health is valuable. You're important. If you're not driving around those, if you're not walking by those on your way home from school, if you're not driving by them as you're going around the neighborhood, you're getting a different message. So sending that message of how do we plant health, how do we plant those messages in our community, is really important. I will tell you, the new map shows that we've started to do that, and right there in the core of the city, we've planted three medical facilities. And we believe that's a start, but we have a lot of work to do. Cancer deaths, cancer occurs all across our community, and for anyone who's faced it, they know that it requires a great deal of time in working with their medical provider. This begins to show the geographic disparities that exist between people who are struggling with the very same illness, but perhaps have a geographic disparity to getting that access to care. Smoking, smoking is one of the new maps that we're going to reveal, and it's going to show that while we have again made huge strides, much like in obesity, there is still a tremendous amount of work to do, especially as we move into the north and west quadrants of our city. And asthma. Asthma, some people say, oh, okay, well, it's the airport, or it's the interstate, or it's the industry that's out there. Bottom line is, asthma is an indicator of poverty, because it's related to housing, it's related to smoking in the home, and those are the kinds of things we have to address if we're going to ever look at the asthma problem in the best possible way. So, I go back to the life expectancy issue, and I can say that if you are pushed down by the issue of poverty, if you're pushed down by the issue of childhood obesity, say eight years, if you're pushed down by the issues of high ACE scores or mental illness, where people with mental illness die on average 20 to 25 years less than someone who does not have mental illness, suddenly that 30 years doesn't seem all that impossible anymore. The question is, what are we going to do about it? And how are we going to change it? And I think some of that is rooted in place-based agenda. It's really looking at what's happening in a very specific neighborhood, it's looking at what's happening in a very specific part of our community. And it's not only saying, we understand what's happening there, but we're willing to step into that neighborhood, perhaps a neighborhood where none of us even lives, and say, we're going to help make this part of the community as healthy as the rest of the community. So I will tell you that these maps are all online. You can find them here, you can go to a specific school, and you can look at every piece of data, the maps, you can layer them on top of each other, all that you want, and I would encourage you to do that, and we would be happy to assist you in any way to do that as well. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I hope I didn't go over my time.
You did perfect. Questions or comments from board members? Annie?
I can't tell you this. How do you think, someone who's been thinking about this a long time, how could we at LPS on the board utilize these maps? I mean, they're about health, they're not about, you know, where we're going to put our schools, where we're going to do, you know, education, but how could we utilize them in understanding and making decisions?
Well, I think you can use them a lot of ways. First of all, this is only a few of them. I mean, we can, we have crime maps, we have educational attainment maps, we have all kinds of maps. So first of all, don't limit your idea to just these maps. But the second thing I think you do is, we have really challenged people that apply to us for funding, to say, understand the neighborhood, understand the population, understand that not every part of our community is like another part of our community. And it requires very specific place-based focus. So when you're looking at starting a program, when you're looking at addressing childhood obesity, when you're looking at funding programs that address a target topic, think about where can we make the best investment? Where can we make, not a shallow impact, but a very deep impact in one place? And we've seen time and time again, the deeper you go, the better the outcome.
Matt?
I know that we've had, I've had at least someone approach me really advocating for recess and activity, PE, and stuff like that, so in particular, looking at the obesity one. Do you have any idea if there's any suggestions or recommendations to us as a district as far as activity-related recess or PE? Maybe that's not something you're able to...
Well, I'm sure Bob Brown has talked to plenty about that, but I think, I think there's a lot of ways to build in movement and activity, even if it's not your traditional recess. I think there's a lot of ways to do that, and a lot of schools have shown how to do that. There's also a way to use the after-school programs, and there's a way to use the community learning centers as a way to provide those resources as well. So I would look at every possible option for that kind of thing. But yes, I do believe that unless we raise up kids who understand the value of movement and good eating, the next generation is, they're going to die sooner than every generation before them. And that's really a sad tale in the culture and in the times we live in to say that. But childhood obesity is an epidemic, and we have to all figure out together how to make it work. I'll tell you, yesterday was at the F Street Recreation Center, we helped fund a program there called Feet First. And it's teaching kids simply to run, to move. And you think, okay, well, that's great, I mean, in this area, but the best part about it was that it not only was teaching kids to run and move their bodies and the feeling of doing that, but it was teaching kids the idea of how to reach a goal, how to accomplish a goal, to teach them discipline and control. The very first day they started, the coach told me, the little, I think his name was Jason, took off, ran as fast as he could for 20 seconds. Of course, he was exhausted, and his first mile he ever ran was 16 minutes. By the end of eight weeks, his first mile, he ran another mile, and it was eight minutes. And it was because, and then he told me he was going to the Olympics, by the way, and I told him I'd watch him when he got there. And he, the great thing about it was that it taught him the idea of discipline, and how do you reach a goal, and to own that goal, and then to celebrate that goal. And to me, that's a bigger lesson than just recess, for example. Yeah.
That's great. Thank you. Kathy?
One of the stark revelations to me was, which really wasn't a revelation, it's actually a fact, was that all of the healthcare providers moved south. And I know that because I've lived in my house for 45 years, 40 years, I guess it's 40 years, and my mom and dad lived in the same house for 50, over 50 years. And I remember when we got our doctor, we have the same physician, she was eight blocks from my house, and now she's on 33rd and Pioneers. What caused that major shift? And, because here's what I noticed, people don't go get healthcare, not because they either, because, they don't go get it because it's not there. Driving 10 miles for an ear infection is a whole lot more of a struggle for a family who may only have one vehicle, or may have to rely on public transportation. So that map, to me, was very stark, because it looked like a desert of no healthcare providers.
Yeah. And we're working on that. I think the answer is, I think there's answer to that. I think it's a couple of folds. I think one is helping families understand the value of that healthcare. First of all, helping them understand healthcare, which, I mean, that's tough to begin with. You go to a doctor, they're not exactly sure, what am I going to have to pay? Maybe I already have a bill there. All of these kinds of things play into that decision that don't play into our decisions when we go. But there are beginning to move organizations that are saying, we're going to plant there. And the thing that I would make the case for is, when we plant there, it has to be planted for the entire family. We can't just focus on ear infections in kids, we can't just focus on physicals for kids. We have to focus on families, and we have to say, how do we plant services there for an entire family? Because that is, I think, the support mechanism that's going to cause the whole boat to rise, and ultimately lead us down a healthy path. So we're working on that, and the schools can certainly be a partner in that.
Well, I know that my family was here from Minnesota and Wisconsin, and they grew up in the same neighborhood, they grew up with us, but they're looking like, how come you don't have any hospitals, literally, north of Oak? I said, I don't know. Nobody built one?
Yeah, well, it's market forces, there's no question. They're going to where people can more afford to pay to use those services, and you can't blame them. That's not, I'm not saying they shouldn't be there, but it's going to take people like the Endowment and people in the community to say, we're going to help other providers plant in places where they're not, because it's simply not economically viable for them to do it on their own.
Lanny?
First of all, thank you so much for sharing this. I first saw this information about a year ago when I was in leadership Lincoln, and it was the most startling presentation that I saw that year. To think of a 28 to 30-year difference. This last weekend, I had the opportunity to spend some time with my grandparents, who are in their early 90s, and just like that, life expectancy in Southeast Lincoln, and if I think about what their lives would have been like... And if I think about what their lives would have been like, missing the last 30 years, they would have missed all of their grandchildren's high school graduations, their college experiences, starting families. It's just staggering to think about what that difference is. And then also, I would like to echo Don's earlier comment in thanking Annie for insisting that we bring this information forward. The intent here is that this will help inform our discussions on the strategic plan. I also think that it's an important part of our considerations for full-service community schools. I think these maps show us where the highest priorities are, to get more of those services, and to see what we can do to try to shrink down that 30-year number. So, thank you so much for being here tonight.
You're welcome. And the one thing that I do always want to say is that these maps are in no way meant to polarize the community. They're never meant to say, there's us in them. They are meant actually to do the opposite, which is to bring the community together, to understand the challenges that we all face together, and how we can approach them together. And so, I, when I think about these, I wanted to think, I want us to think about, we're really all in this together.
That's very smart, Lanny, and thank you for mentioning that. In the context of the strategic plan and this process that we're going through, looking at what the direction for the district is going to be for the next several years, the thing that occurs to me, one of so many things that occur to me, is watching this very, getting this very sobering information, as I think about people in the community getting their property tax statement, and they rightly think, wow, my property taxes are so high. And then they take a look and see that LPS is somewhere around 63, 65% of their property taxes, and they come to the conclusion that education could cost less if only LPS would just focus on the three Rs. And the reality is, the world is very different than it was 30, 40 years ago, 20 years ago. And our children are exposed to so many more risk factors than before. And the reality is, Lincoln Public Schools is a primary weapon in fighting or addressing many of these risk factors. And I think that, you know, several of the questions up here reflect that. You know, what can we do? What can we do to address this? One of the things that we have done historically is, we funnel resources to the children who have the most needs. And I think that that's something that we, that predates me, that practice. And I think that that is a wonderful response. But just like, I'm sure what all my colleagues are feeling, my next question is, what more can we do? So, thank you, Lori. I would add my voice to everyone else's, and thank you for bringing this information to us.
Lincoln Public Schools is as place-based as it gets, so you're in a great position to do a lot of good things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Steve?
Yeah. Thank you. Can I just, I'm compelled to just say again, if there's a community in the country that can address this jointly, it's Lincoln. And, you know, whether we're talking about the work that the schools can do in partnership with the community, Prosper Lincoln, there is a cost to that, you know? And it, you know, I was sitting here thinking about this. It wasn't very long ago, we were battling to get all-day kindergarten in, you know, when people were pushing back against that, saying it's not necessary, and breakfast programs, and preschool, and all of that. And, you know, even with those kinds of interventions, all designed and determined to make a difference in the lives of kids, we still have an awful lot of work to do. But through those partnerships, you know, certainly, this is great data for us to have, because there's things, again, that we can do to strengthen our partnerships with our community groups, and get more services to families through community learning centers. I mean, what a great vehicle we have in place. All we need to do is figure out exactly, you know, how do we take that to scale in an environment that makes it financially challenging? So, great information. Thank you, Lori.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Next, that brings us to public comment. I don't have any blue cards. Is there anyone from the community who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Anybody? Annie?
A move that we bring forward the consent agenda?
Moving approval of the consent agenda. Matt?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Kathy?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on check number 579350 as part of Agenda Item 9.2.A of the Agenda Materials for this meeting. I vote in favor of all other consent items.
Connie?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on check number 579350 as part of Agenda Item 9.2.A of the Agenda Materials for this meeting. I vote in favor of all other consent items.
Lanny?
Going for three. Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on check number 579350 as part of Agenda Item 9.2.A of the Agenda Materials for this meeting. I vote in favor of all other consent items.
Matt?
Out of an abundance of caution, I hereby declare a potential conflict of interest and hereby abstain from voting on Agenda Item 9 to D, Contracts Agreement 8949 with Lancaster County, related to the truancy diversion program.
Any others? No, nothing to read. All right. Seeing no other comments, Laura?
Just for clarification, and you would vote in favor of all of the other consent items?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Laura, would you please call the roll on the consent agenda?
Mrs. Danick?
Yes.
Mr. Boswell?
Yes.
Mrs. Duncan?
Yes.
Ms. Mumgarde?
Yes.
Mr. Schulte?
Yes.
Mr. Mayhew?
Yes. Next, that brings us to items for first reading. We'll start with item 10.1.1, the District Management Council Action Plan. Annie, would you like to introduce this as Chair of Student Learning?
I would. I'd like to have Dr. Staben count forward. Is that correct?
Yep. I'll just comment on it. This is the same document. We've had a few different opportunities to review it, and now we're at the point where we're ready to go to work. One of the things that we had talked about earlier was whether or not we needed to begin filling in some of the detail work. And from guidance from our board chair and co-chair, we're bringing it forth without the detail work, with the understanding, though, that that is going to be happening over the course of the summer. But what this is on for first reading is for the action steps and kind of the what of the plan. And we'll bring this for first reading tonight, followed by second reading. But hopefully, we're at a point where we're ready to go to work, and we anticipate giving frequent updates through Student Learning Committee or for full board meetings. And just want to remind the board, this is coming from the process that we started in 2015 as part of your board goal. The collaborative work that was done over the ensuing years now results in an actionable plan that gets to the real work. We know this work will probably span over the course of at least three to five years, and is also a great opportunity as we're beginning to talk about how we're going to accomplish the work in this plan. It's really a great opportunity for shared leadership, and it's going to take a lot of hands on deck, leadership with our building principals, our special ed staff, our teachers, just a lot of people are going to need to be part of this work. And I think that's the exciting part of this. I think that's one of the benefits maybe we didn't think about or really highlight as we moved through the process, but I think will be one of the benefits that we'll realize as we move forward. So, this is first reading. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions or comments? Kathy?
I don't have questions, but I have a comment. I really like the format that's in. I like the detail, who's responsible for XYZ, the timeline that you're going to do it, how you're going to measure if it's successful, and what it's going to cost. When we started on looking at the DMC audit, there was a lot of, I want to call it concern, but maybe fear of the unknown, what exactly is going to happen? And I think this talks about the issues that came through the audit, and how we're going to work to solve issues, and more importantly, focus on helping kids with special needs. So, thank you for all the work.
Annie?
You know, as a member and chairing the student learning, this is something we've come back to almost every month, and kept reviewing and reviewing. And I think a couple of things are really important for us to think about, you know, as we look at this. One thing we were reminded of with the DMC is that because of our growth, how we keep having so many kids coming to us every year, that we, moving forward, we need to be very purposeful in our planning and our funding. We often sometimes get stuck on the funding, but we have to also be thinking about the planning. And that this plan has been extremely purposeful, and a lot of voices have touched it and thought it through. The other thing that I like to also just kind of broaden out our thinking is that we no longer call this our special education review. We now call this our struggling student plan. And that, I think it's very important for us to use that language, because struggling students is much more what we're really, the plan is about. And struggling students then can be pretty much anybody's kid at any point in time. I say...